Now I'm calling the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Education to order, and I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
President Van Allen.
Here.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alta. Trustee Estrada.
Here.
Trustee Nichols. Trustee Roth.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we'll start the meeting. We expect maybe one member to arrive a little bit late. So, and we have a member who had a medical emergency and was possibly going to join us remotely, but we haven't heard from them. So at this point, we will dispense with that. Do you know, can we add them after the beginning of the meeting? Or the board would sought to vote.
You, President Van Allen, you'd have to table the motion for the two four four nine, or twenty-four ninety-nine item. And then you would be able to bring that item back up if that is what you would like to do.
Okay. Do I need a motion to table, or can I just do that?
It's best practice to table, to make a motion.
Okay. So just in case Sandra is able to join us remotely, we have to pass a motion from the board, but it's the first thing on the agenda. So we need, so in order to be able to do that later, we need to table it now. So I need a motion in a second to table item one point one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, a motion by Roth, second by Estrada. And let's do a roll call, just to be totally clear about it.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Here.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Roth.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
President Van Allen.
All right. Motion carries. So that item is tabled just in case. So now is the time for the pledge allegiance, and I'd like to ask Dr. Sabat to lead us in the pledge.
Please face the flag. Stand if you can. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustees, I need to know if we can approve the agenda, and if so, give me a quick motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
By Sanchez.
I'll second.
Second by Roth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This agenda is adopted. The board now has to go into a closed session for a litigation matter, and so we will have to close the meeting. I'm sorry for the audience, and you'll be able to come back in a little while. This is a litigation matter. We'll see if we can get that. So we have a request from trustee Nichols, who had a fall this morning and had a medical problem. To be able to join us, we have to have a vote of the board to allow that to happen. And it's described there on your agenda, number one point one. So I need a motion that allows trustee Nichols to join the meeting due to, remotely due to a medical by Alto.
I'll second.
Second by Acosta, and a roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Oscar Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Acosta.
Aye.
Trustee Alta.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Roth.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously of all present, and so we can arrange to bring Sandra in. Sandra, are you able to hear us? If you could unmute. Shoot, unmute.
There. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Well, glad to hear your voice, Sandra. Glad you're feeling, I hope, a little bit better.
Thank you.
Hey, so we are now at, oh yeah, so I need to report from our closed session. This was a session regarding litigation, and the decision of the board was this time to not enter into the proposed litigation. And as a spinoff to that, we are going to convene a, an agenda item, or hold an agenda item at our January meeting regarding impacts of social media on education, particularly in a few areas such as cyberbullying, body image, and suicidal ideation. And so that will be an agenda item for us. We're going to ask our staff to report on current practices, and we're going to look forward to what we can do to improve this situation. That will be in January. Okay, so now we're back to the regular agenda. And this is the opportunity for public comment from anyone who wishes to address the board on items not on today's agenda. And we ask that you fill out the little blue slip and hand it to the clerk if you haven't already. Is there anyone who wishes to address us on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. This is now the time for the annual organization of the board, at which we will be electing officers and making some appointments to committees and so on. And the first item of business is nominations for the president of the board. And as a reminder, trustees, that our usual practice, not required, but our usual practice has been that the vice president do the presidency. And I'm kind of hoping that someone will make that nomination, but really open. Oh, this is the time for nominations for president.
I will nominate Sue Roth.
Roth, and is there any other nomination, or is there a second for that? To make that into a motion. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, then I'd like the board to vote by roll call for, on the question of appointing Sue Roth as our president for the coming year.
Trustee Acosta.
Aye.
Trustee Alta.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Roth.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously of all present, and we're going to hand the gavel to Sue.
I need training in that. Anyway.
Congratulations.
Thank you for this honor. I will go forward in a good fashion. And any suggestions either at the board meeting or after the board meetings on how I'm conducting or whatever. So the next item on the agenda, nine point three, is nomination for the vice president of the board. And I would like to nominate Alisa Alto to this position. Is there a second?
I would like to second that, and the board may recall that Alyssa was our vice president a couple of years ago. At that time of potentially succeeding to president, she stepped aside for various reasons and asked me if I would be willing to serve, and I was disappointed because I would like to see her advance, but I understood, so I was happy to step in. So it's an honor to have you able and willing now to step up.
Yes, roll call. Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Actually, so we actually have a motion there.
Need a motion, and then we would need to make sure.
I saw a motion, I noted a motion from President Roth, and then a second from trustee Van Allen.
Yes.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alta. Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving forward. The item nine point five is appointment of the chairperson for the county committee on school district organization. And following in tradition, it is normally passed to the exiting president of the board, which would be Bruce Van Allen. Really? Okay. I will make that motion to appoint. I think I can just appoint. Yeah. I will appoint Bruce Van Allen. The next is the nine point six, appointment of representative to the Santa Cruz School Board Association, SCUSPA. Or there, I have served in that position, and I will most likely continue, we can, anybody can go to these meetings. I will continue to go, but if someone would like to be the official board representative, let me know. No one leaping to it?
I could definitely take that on. I would love to.
So I will appoint Edward Estrada to this position. And I think you will greatly enjoy, enjoy it. It is very, it's very fulfilling to hear the other school boards, what they're doing, how they're acting, and getting to know them, because there's a lot of similarity. And we do have kind of a broad umbrella over our districts, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is is at nine point seven, establishment of regular meetings of the board. And they have been listed, it's towards the end of the with item seventeen shows what is tentative. And the, there is one date that has been added, and that is usually where we approve the budget. And then we are going into an election year this year, and we must meet within a certain date of, after the approval by the county office voting. But are so they are, what is being suggested is that December twelfth versus, I think it was the nineteenth. So the earlier in December. And then, at the same time, I believe we will look at or and discuss the starting time. We review that every year. And it has been moved, this, a few years ago, we moved it to two o'clock to four o'clock. And so I'm going to entertain any suggestions or do we need to change it? I open, I open the floor. Yes.
I've been going to meetings for a long time, and it used to be that public meetings were always at seven thirty in the evening. The city councils, county supervisor, but then meetings got longer and started happening in the daytime and other things. And a concern I have, of course, is that we want the public to be able to know what we're doing and to see what we're doing. But a big concern I also have is for the families and the teachers and the staff. And my perception is that it might be easier in the late afternoon for a lot of them than to come back here in the evening. And so I have mixed feelings about which, who are we serving the best, or what's the balance there? But I'm open to hearing from other board members if, if you want change. I, you know, unless it, well, even if it's at eight in the morning, because that's actually a good time for me, but personally, but probably we're not heading that way. But I'm not, I'm not, I guess what I'd say is that if we always say we should meet in the evening so the public can show up in this body, that doesn't usually yield much attendance.
I was going to ask, has anyone complained, or have we been aware of people who let us know that they want to, but they couldn't because of the time? They would if it was an evening?
Not, not to my knowledge. As, as much as we, we would hope that our, our meetings would bring in a, a big pool of folks, we don't usually get a lot of, a lot of interest except for specific items for, you know, for important people that we're celebrating, or if there's a controversial topic like and so we have not, in the last six years, to my knowledge, haven't heard of a request for us to start later, so people.
I I personally would prefer this time, but I think based on principle and based off of just like thinking about working families and folks that don't get off until five o'clock, or work a nine to five and have to do things like that. That's kind, something later would be a little bit preferable, even if it had, you know, if we were to put a cap on how long these meetings go for, you know, so we're not sitting here till eleven o'clock at night. But yeah, that's just my opinion, just kind of on principle and for, you know, some working families, a lot of working families that have to work until, until five o'clock, who aren't able to make these meetings, but even though there's not a stated interest by folks, I think just based off of principle, that's, that's my opinion. That's where I stand on it.
I'll just add, I believe we will continue.
President Roth, can you use your mic, please? Thank you.
It's on. Okay. Got too much stuff in front of me. I believe we will continue to have Zoom available to our meetings. As far, as far, at least in the present, we will, we will continue forward. And with that, and there is a way in which the public can communicate to us via Zoom. I believe at this point, we are looking at written statements. Otherwise, it would be necessary for a person who wishes to speak to be here in person. And I also am aware that if we are entertaining a topic where we know there's going to be a lot of interest, we can adjust and set up the agenda so that it starts six, that item.
So I think when making a decision, I think there's three groups of people that we need to take into consideration. I think the first one, and while we're focusing a lot on this conversation, is the, the public, right, the community. Making sure that the meetings are accessible, that they can come, that they can attend, that they can voice their opinions. I think the second person or the second group that we need to really focus and think about is our staff. You know, they're the ones that are always here. They, every single meeting, whether it's one department or the other department, but they're here, right? And we also need to take into consideration, you know, their time and, and their availability. And then the third group that I think we need to really discuss and think about is the trustees, you know, ourselves. And whether the time, the date that we do choose is limiting, you know, when it comes to recruiting, when it comes to reelection, and when it comes to people being interested, right? It could be a put off if it's during the day and people have to work, right? They can't get away from that. So I think when we're making the decision, I think those three specific groups we need to think about and kind of balance between the needs of those three groups and really what's, what's, what would be best for, for them all.
Further comments? Any further comments?
I just, I could add, I think that was well put.
Trust, trustee Acosta, can you close your mic?
Yeah, let's try again. Sorry about that. All right. So I think that was well put, trustee Sanchez and Estrada, I think it tied in to what we're trying to get to this evening. And I know some of us are, you know, North County and South County. And for, for, obviously, in my area, I work far south, so you know, the drive is a lot further.
And, you know, working in Ag, you know, our, our hours are from early morning to late evening. But with that said, you know, I do like the four o'clock time. It works. I try to make it work. But like you said, trustee Sanchez, we do have to take, you know, number one is the community. So I agree.
How about our student board member? Our newest addition.
For me, I think, again, the community is very important. I know, I know of a lot of people who do work the nine to five, you know, as a trustee Estrada, yeah, sorry about that. Estrada said, when taking into account those people and also our, the staff, but also us, I mean, as a student, I get out at three forty-five, so I do have to leave school early in order to come to these meetings, which is something big, but I think the four o'clock meetings do work well because it's also, the meetings don't end late enough where I have to worry about my other school coursework that I do have later on in the day. So I think the four PM meetings does, do work well.
So do I have a, a motion which would also include looking at that tentative dates? If that would include those, or if you don't wish to have the extra budget meeting in June or earlier meeting in December.
And then to, to clarify, trustee, or President Roth, it's to approve the dates that are on this powerpoint. All the dates listed.
Okay, because this one says tentative.
So those are matching these ones. So they're exactly the same.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion to adopt these dates, and I would be happy to accept an amendment that adjusts the time if someone still wants to test whether, you know, a little bit later would work or something like that. So I'll make the motion to adopt the dates. What I said, yeah.
Am, can I have, are we like able to get like a staff perspective of the time? Because I feel like sometimes we're sitting here and we have these great discussions, and we have staff who are sitting here, and it's like seven thirty, and I'm like, oh my God, they've been sitting here since four. And so I think that's kind of my driving factor in this decision with the four o'clock is like why I'd lean more towards it, because I assume that's easier in our staff, and I know that it's a lot for them to like, like go home and then come back out. So is it possible to get kind of like a staff perspective on, on this time?
I would say, generally speaking, it's, it is more convenient for the staff. I absolutely respect, you know, keeping in mind the access and, and and the impact on, on the community, but if it was, I, I would, I'm confident to say that, that if staff were asked, they, their preference would be to keep it really.
I think that's like a really important thing to consider in this decision, and I think that if we can still be really intentional about making sure that like we have agenda items placed at a certain time, if we know that there's like public comment, we have an idea that maybe people who are working those nine to fives are going to show up later. I think we can be accommodating with that, like, public element, but as trustee Sanchez said, with staff being here every single week, I think that's a really important thing to keep in mind. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Oh, I made my motion to accept the schedule, and I'll accept an amendment on the time if someone wants to propose one.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I will say that I'm not super opposed to four o'clock. But I think it's, it's definitely something that I, I hope that we can talk more with the community about. I don't know how that would have some kind of community conversation about, about it. I know that there's not much interest, and I, I, after hearing everyone's thoughts at this time, I would want to not just pick a time and try to go with it and just see if it works. I'd really want to discuss it more before making an amendment and choosing a time, pulling it out of thin air. So I would, I would, I hope that we can continue having these kinds of conversations with staff and the community and everything like that. So we can all find a time that kind of works for everyone. So, yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor. Steve, we can just call for yay or nay? Bernice. I'm out of practice. That wasn't picked up by the microphone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Sandra?
Yes.
Are you a yay or a nay?
Oh, I said yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Now, moving on, and I'm so glad that we're so amenable to public, staff, and ourselves. And yes, anytime you do hear of a problem, let us know. And during the agenda planning, which we do every month, we will address, we will look at the times and where we feel there may, public may show up. Adjust it a little later. Next is twelve point two. Here. Well, have I skipped over a whole bunch?
We are on item nine point, nine point eight, President Roth.
Okay.
Appointments to standing committees.
Yeah. I'm just getting my sea legs here. So we will now do appointments to standing committees. Nine point eight point one is the agenda committee, which generally has the president and the vice president. Acceptable to you? Any further additions? Okay. I will appoint myself and appointment to the ad hoc committees. Board Budget Committee. In the past, this was Abel, myself, and Ed. If I'm not mistaken. So is, everyone is acceptable with this, or would you like to be put onto the committee? Student, board trustee.
I would. I just, I'm not sure what these committees do, as I would, but I'm not sure what they do.
As far as what this committee is, we meet with the superintendent. As far as what this committee is, we meet with the superintendent, Bernice, and decide the placement, the agenda and go over it. It is normally a Zoom meeting, or it can be in person or both. And we can take into account your schedule because you are in school and we were also. So that we do some form of come together.
It's also worth mentioning that the these are called ad hoc committees, meaning they don't have regular meetings that you have to, you know, come to every week or every month.
If it would, would be helpful, we'd be happy maybe to meet with Oscar.
And explain that.
Explain the different committees and, you know, the how often they meet. And then maybe at a future meeting, the trustee could, the student trustee could share which of those committees are of interest.
So I don't put you on the spot so much. Okay.
I have a request to kind of interrupt the process here.
Sure.
If I may, and you can reject this if you want. I'm just aware that we have some people waiting here for some important honor. And I wonder if we could jump over this business and just go right to that right now. Just, we can come back to the appointments and the consent agenda. It just seems like, you know, we had to do this.
We need a motion.
Do we? Okay. Here, Roth, I would like to move that the board jump to item 12.1 and then come back to the intervening items.
Hold my feet to the fire. Is there a second? Okay. I believe I should request our student board members vote first and that you not be included in the general. You are kind of an adversary. So, have you voted? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the board, all those in favor say aye.
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 Yes.
Opposed? Passes. So we are going to help our audience and move right to 12.1, where we are going to be recognizing two people, Donna Gagni, instructional aide, she's autism support and special education, and Kathleen Prophet, instructional aide for alternative education. And Dr. Sabah, if you'll take it from here.
Yes, thank you so much. We are going to be celebrating two very special people, as you mentioned, President Roth. The first is somebody who is not here tonight, and that is Donna Gagni. Donna was a part of our autism program in their special education department for over 13 years, brought a lot of support and love and care for the students that that she served. We are very excited for her as she goes into retirement. She has always brought so much joy and laughter to the classroom. And so she's going to be missed greatly and we're going to be forwarding her retirement award to her and and wish her the very best as she enters this chapter of retirement. So let's maybe give a round of applause for Donna Gagni. And now what many folks have been waiting for who are here present, we have somebody very special who is here. And and that is Kathleen Prophet, who Kathleen was a part of our organization since 2007. So if we add up the numbers on that one, that's over 16 years. And Kathleen is is a very, just an absolutely amazing person who brought, has always brought so much heart to everything that she has done. To tell us a little bit more about Kathleen, I'm going to ask that our executive director of our of our adult education programs, Johnny Rice, join me here and tell us a little bit more about Kathleen and all that she has done for our students and the alternative education program. Welcome, Johnny.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's my distinct pleasure to get to honor and introduce one of the most amazing people I've ever known, recent retiree and Miss Classified Employee of the Year 2011, Kathleen Prophet. Kathleen came to work at Oasis back in 2007. With her, she brought a personality and a way of interacting that made everyone feel welcome and special. It's because of Kathleen that when you walk into Oasis on the Cabrillo College campus, that you feel immediately at ease. There's a sense of order, cleanliness, and attentiveness there. There's friendliness and jokes. And you can be sure you'll be offered both food and coffee. Kathleen retired last month, but all those things I described still happen at Oasis because she created a culture there, one that only she could have left behind. They all know over there now that the plants need watering, even on weekends and holidays. They know that the freezer and refrigerator need cleaning every night before anyone can go home. They know that humor is the best medicine and that everything goes better with snacks. Most importantly, though, they know that every person that walks through the doors of our school deserves to feel welcomed, seen, and appreciated. It's sometimes the little things that do that. Sometimes it's the big things, too. Kathleen is one of those selfless, generously kind people that most of us only dream of being. I wish I could be half as conscientious as she. In the last 15 years, Kathleen never missed my birthday. Every year, I got socks from her, socks, just like the ones I'm wearing today. I got corn dogs today. I have a drawer full of these dress socks, thanks to Kathleen, and I don't think I ever got her anything in return. So today, it makes me really happy to get to honor and appreciate her, to say, Kathleen, thank you for making Oasis a safe home for our students and families to land. Thank you for kindness and selflessness and generosity and humor. Thank you for the welcoming spirit you leave us with. And most of all, thank you for the socks. We love you.
Let's see if Gene Mills would like to join us and say a few words. Gene is one of our amazing, inspiring Oasis teachers, former teachers, and we got to work with Kathleen for quite some time. Welcome, Gene.
Good afternoon, Kathleen. I'm honored to say a few words of recognition for your myriad accomplishments at Oasis, from the vantage point of having been so lucky to work with you for about 15 years. Some of you may not know that Kathleen has a superpower, and that superpower is vision, x-ray vision. At Oasis, Kathleen could see into the future. She knew if the school was in danger of being dirty or running out of any material need, textbooks, rice cakes, urinal cakes. Her spidey sense protected us at all times from if we were going to get a parking ticket, she saw that. If if there was stranger danger, she knew. If there was an attendance audit or a surprise visit by an administrator, that never happened. We were never surprised because Kathleen saw them, would see them coming. I won't tell you what our secret code word was when an administrator was coming. Kathleen could also see through people. She could see right into the hearts of our students. She saw when a student did not have food, or they needed diapers for their child, or they needed a coat, or a job, and she made sure those needs were met. She saw any time a student needed recognition. She went to see their entries at the fair. She cheered students at their home football game when they, if they went back to their traditional high school. She would go and eat at their family's restaurant or visit their family's business. Kathleen saw the invisible students. She made them blossom through her unique way of seeing them. She would learn about their pets. She would give them each a nickname. She would find a book that might match their interest. She would challenge them to rolling chair races. Or frequently, she would invent out of whole cloth, an urgent need of the school that only they could contribute so that they would feel needed. From way back on Bay Avenue to when we moved to Cabrillo, Kathleen could see that what's helped students the most when they came to school, what they wanted the most was to see adults being silly. So she investigated, instigated box folding contests, Waffle Wednesdays, stuffed animals stuck to the ceiling, costume pageants, just to name a few of her shenanigans. Her sense of humor is legendary, and she brings out the childlike joy in everyone that she meets. Every department at the county office and every other school envied us for getting to work with you, Kathleen. On a personal note, and I know that many, many staff members can say the same of how Kathleen came to our rescue in in times of need. When my first husband, Tom, passed, Kathleen and Jamie, her husband, did not miss one of my son's surf contests, or krill lectures, or homecoming float building projects. And Kathleen and my son Evan, and I'm sure many of you have 100 secret nonsense sayings that they think are hilarious and that make everybody else kind of feel jealous and a little left out. Kathleen, with the help of your generous and talented contractor husband, Jamie, you literally and figuratively built the best parts of Oasis. You are irreplaceable. You have given your whole heart, much of your salary, your sweat, your brilliant mind, to create success in the noble cause of loving and caring for the Oasis family. I'll see you at Shaminad. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Johnny Rice to join me up again. And I'm going to ask our our person of the hour to join me as well. Kathleen, we'd like to present. On behalf of the County Office of Education and the County Board of Education, we'd like to present this, this symbol of our gratitude for everything that you've done for for our students, for the joy and the heart that you have, you bring, you have brought to our work. We miss you already because you've been gone already for some time. And we are so grateful for everything that you have done. Congratulations, Kathleen. Would you like to say a few words?
Rarely do you get to work at a place that you want to turn your paycheck in because you laughed all day. And I felt every day coming to work at the county office, it was just so fun. And with Dr. Sabah, Mr. Watkins, it just, and all my teachers, the office staff over here, it just was a really fun job. And I thank all of you.
Before you sit down, Kathleen, we'd like to take a picture with you. And any of the, would the board members want to remain seated? Or you want to come up into the picture, whatever you'd like?
Anyone want to join me?
Let's get in the picture. We're going to get over here.
Okay. Sounds like a wonderful, wonderful person. And I, I can, Oasis is an amazing, one of our amazing programs. And I hope that it attracts someone else into that position with the same ability to give and observe. Now, we will go back to the appointments of the ad hoc committees. And I was thinking, maybe I should just say who has served on the base on these committees, ponder, and then we will go back and see if anyone wishes to drop off or come on, you know, add themselves. So the Board Budget Committee, again, Abel Sanchez, myself, and Ed Acosta. Policy Committee, which addresses how we operate, Bruce Van Allen, Lisa Alto, and Edward Estrada. The Charter Committee, Charter Schools Committee.
President Roth, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear. Who's on the Board Budget Committee?
Which?
The budget one, I'm sorry.
The Board Budget, I had, at least in looking through our records, Abel Sanchez, me, and Ed Acosta.
So I want to clarify that I believe Philicetti stepped in for me for the Board Budget Committee and has been absent since her retirement.
That is correct. Are you appointing these trustees to that committee? Or are you asking?
I thought I would just say who's on what, and then people can see if they wish to adjust.
I can display who was on it as of this year, if you'd like. Give me one moment.
Great.
Okay. I wasn't sure what was happening at the moment. My apologies. Okay. So here is the board committees that were approved last December. Yes. And the one correction for the agenda committee is that trustee Nichols did leave the agenda committee, but I wasn't updated on this one. But everything else is accurate. Yeah. It's a lot of excitement in all those committees.
Okay. So seeing what is on the board or on the screen, does anyone wish to, Rose is, of course, retired off the board. And so there could possibly, I think we have to stick with three people, so as not to go against the ground. So would anyone like to, we could operate with less than three also. But would anyone like to join the Budget Committee or step down? You want to stay where you are?
Well, I'm listed under Budget Committee, and so I would want to withdraw from that. I listed with almost all of them.
Okay.
I want to focus.
I want to focus on policy and community outreach and legislation.
So perhaps we could go uh, uh, committee by committee and then identify if there, anybody is wanting to, and then we can just, so we could maybe start with the uh, have we resolved the agenda committee? So for budget committee, sounds like you're trying to want it.
Anyone like to join me?
I, I am interested in.
Okay. Edward, okay. Uh, policy like uh, policy committee. Yes, to Bruce Van Allen and Lisa Alto. Okay.
And uh, I joined last month or yeah, so I would love to stay on that as well.
Great. So the three of you. I appoint. Uh, charter school committee. Yes. Yes, Alto. Yes, to Sanchez. Uh, yes, to me unless someone else would like to be on it. I don't want to. I'll get. And uh, community outreach and legislative committee. So we, uh, Ed, do you wish to stay on? Okay, and Sandra?
Yes, I, I wish to stay on.
Okay, thank you. And Bruce?
Yes.
Bruce Van Allen. And the superintendent compensation committee.
Well, we last met about a year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hasn't been in recent time, so we need to do that.
Um, I'll, I'll provide an update on the uh, superintendents. Uh, I, I don't think there's going to be a need uh, for us.
Okay, so should we need it, we can re, confirm. Okay. So thank you to, to you all for helping on these very important committees. And we will meet with Oscar, student representative and discuss them further and see where you might like to be. Next, uh, is the consent agenda. Uh, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Uh, for the motion is made by Bruce Van Allen. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Thank you, Sandra. Hey, uh, Oscar? Yay or nay?
Yay.
Thank you. Uh, board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Now, um, that's where I got.
That was consent.
Okay, correspondence. There at least, do we have any?
There was one correspondent, which is a holiday card from Lozano Smith. Wishing you all a happy holiday.
Deeply appreciated.
Thank you. We send him one too. Uh, now we, uh, we have done twelve, uh, recognizing our retirees. And now we go to citing first interim financial report, uh, which I believe Leanne will start us off on this.
So I do believe that, that Rebecca Oker is going to be coming up to present some of this information. And so I am going to take an opportunity to embarrass uh, Ms. Oker. Uh, before she comes up here, Ms. Oker, Becky, as we, we, we know her, uh, was uh, honored uh, with an award. This by the CASBO, which is a statewide um, uh, financial organization. They call it the magnificent seven award. And uh, and Becky was selected for her amazing work um, over many years here at the county office of education. She was nominated by our, our deputy, uh, Leanne Reyes and um, and was honored before the statewide organization um, earlier this month. So we'd just like to congratulate her and thank her for all, all she does for, for our county office of education.
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna uh, for our first interim, turn it over to our deputy superintendent. Lots of information to be shared and I'm sure you're gonna have lots of questions.
Hopefully not a lot of questions. Um, I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank you trustee Roth and also you trustee Estrada for being part of our budget committee. Um, I do have snacks if you want to come in person, as you know. So you're right around the corner. If you ever want to meet in person, normally we meet on Zoom, but you're welcome to come in too if you, if you choose. And Melissa and I really enjoy those meetings. Um, they sometimes go in down different rabbit holes, but we always learn something together. So it's always um, very interesting. So thank, thank you for participating. So I was instructed before I finished this PowerPoint by Ms. Lopez that the last time she presented for me, there was a concern that these, with these were too boring and they weren't fun. So we started off by some applauding hands for our team in the internal business services division because without them, we would not be able to present this information to you this evening. So many thanks to that team, which is led by Melissa Lopez. And then we have our Michelle Kennedy, Tara Lee, Brooke Russell, Natia Ambrosi, and also Shay Sexton. She's our newest member. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Today, we're going to be uh, talking about our budget and our reporting process and overview of the 2324 first interim report. The key differences between what you saw at adopted budget and what you're going to be seeing now tonight for first interim. Our multi-year projections, what's next and uh, recommendations. So I thought I'd leave this slide up here for the benefit of our student trustee also and our newest board members so that they can see what the overall process is and where we are in this process. And as a reminder to those of you who already know and are in our old hats at this, but right now we are in our first interim reporting uh, period, which is where we believe our financial statements to be um, with projections through October 31st. And they are due to uh, the state by December 15th. This is an opportunity for all organizations, including the COE, to make any adjustments to our budget based on what our actual spending has been, trends, new initiatives that may have come up between July 1 and October 31st. Um, and just where we think we might be at the end of the fiscal year. Also, at this point, any program that had carryover, so they didn't expend maybe all of their funds from last year. Um, we've now closed the books. We know how much money they have left over. And so those amounts are also posted into the budget along with any deferred revenues. So it's also really important to keep in mind that unlike maybe a corporation, budgeting for school districts is really a snapshot in time and it constantly is changing. And I know for people who are uh, used to the corporate world, that feels really, really strange. Okay, there are three types of certification classifications. Our budget does need to be certified at each reporting cycle. A positive means that we will be able to meet our obligations for the current and two subsequent fiscal years. Qualified means that we, an entity may not be able to meet their obligations for the current or two subsequent fiscal years. And a negative is assigned to an entity that's unable to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the current year or for the subsequent fiscal year. So moving on to the next slide, you can see that we are very thrilled, very excited and having fun because we will be filing a positive certification this time around. As always. So we will end up with positive ending cash and fund balance in the county school service fund oh one at the end of fiscal year 2526, which is our requirement to go forward for three years. We will have our 5% reserve and we will have positive ending cash balances in all of our COE funds. So that's a very strong position to be in. Moving to our next slide, then we're going to talk about a summary of key updates. Key items that influenced and changed between the adopted budget. Thank you. And um, first interim was the reversal of the GASB fair market value adjustments that we had to make in 2223. That is a $1.4 million adjustment that we had to make during unouted actuels. And I know I've spoken to you about that adjustment ad nauseam, so we won't get into the details of that. Um, the local control funding formula was also updated based on uh, COE's new ability to use the uh, three prior year rolling average for ADA. School districts had received this relief way before we did at the COE. We were always held to only being able to report on annual. So in having um, this rolling average come into play for us, it really helped us with our LCFF calculation this year. Um, but going forward, those really low years are going to come into play. So where can I see a dip and a swing? Absolutely. It's the Columbia, as they say in that little song, right? It's the highs of being on the swing and the lows of being on the swing, right? So right now we're, um, we're on a high. For 2223 are all of our unearned revenue and carryover budgets, as I mentioned earlier, have been recorded. And so you're going to see some changes on our restricted side of the budget as a result of this. All right. Um, another key update uh, that influenced our books is we continue to see, as we have in the past several years, a influx of new resource codes and increased grant awards. Um, and these were, are relating uh, primarily to the wellness center and other student support services. Mr. Painter's office and team Buck Painter, I should say, very busy generating funds and putting in supports for our students in various um, areas. And here's just a, a brief list of some of the new grants and increased awards that we've received. All right, on our next page, I will apologize in advance. It's tiny and I don't know how to make this page fun, except for the fact that the numbers are awesome. So we'll just enjoy the fact that we've got some awesome numbers to share with you. So this is, and I don't know if we can make that a little bit bigger for everybody or if that's okay to be seen. Is it okay? All right, like, you know, I'm not 30 anymore, so it looks super tiny to me. Okay, um, this is high level review at a glance, showing what our combined unrestricted and restricted um, balances are for our general, the fund oh one. Um, if you have your board packet open in front of you and you want to follow along with that, um, these numbers are the ones that you're going to see in your section for the Saks packet. So it's going to be around page 70, I believe, in your board packet. Uh, and at the bottom with a little printout on the actual Saks document is going to be, I think, page 18. Um, the original adopted budget amounts will be seen in column A. And our first interim amounts will be found in the projected year totals, which is out in column D. So as you can see, the adopted budget had projected about $61 million in um, revenues and now has gone up to about $68,000. Again, that's going to be a result of us being able to now use that rolling three-year average and other transfers um, in. You can also uh, by looking at this, see that, that also is contributed to those grants. I was just talking about as well, since this one is combined. Um, also, uh, when you move down and you look at what our total deficit or surplus is, which is always the main focus for me. Um, you can see that our adopted budget had projected approximately $6 million in deficit spending or deficit budgeting. Whereas now at first interim, and again with these key changes, we're looking um, to a significant reduction of only $2.6 million. Um, a reminder that because of these key changes, um, there were uh, increases that in our expenses that also equal our revenue in some instances because they were all on the restricted side of the budget. The one thing that um, it's hard to see, but I would like to point out to you, you can, you can see it very clearly here is when we get to our ending fund balance and then we move down into that section called components of ending fund balance. You're going to see that at our adopted budget, we had a commitment for $2.6 million for our COPs. But you will also recall that at our last board meeting, we did um, have a lot of conversation about the monies that we had available in fund 35 for our debt, as well as the fact that we were planning to um, use this committed amount towards paying our long-term debt. So the change that you're seeing here now is that because we had committed that via resolution and we are now using that money for its original intent. It has now no longer living in the committed or what I refer to as below the line in our financial statements and has now moved up into the transfers. The reason I'm pointing this out to you now is because you're going to see a criteria, when we get to our criterion standards, that says, whoa, what happened? Your transfer's changed by a lot. We, that's on purpose. We know we're moving to pay off our debt sooner than um, anticipated. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes.
Reminder to board members, COP, COP, certificate of participation. It's basically the loan that paid for this facility.
Thank you. So I'm taking that total budget then and breaking it down into um, two sides. The first side we're going to look at here is the unrestricted side. Um, the original adopted amounts again are shown in column A. And our first interim amounts are found in the projected year's total column, which is column D. We had that $4.8 million then increase in revenue. Again, that's the LCF, F, LCFF side. That's primarily attributing, attributing to those changes. And also when you move down and look at what our projected deficit or surplus was at adopted, we were at approximately $4.4 million and we've reduced that down to about $877,000. You also know, those of you who have been around on the board for a while, we usually have quite a bit of money fall out at the end of the year just in the form of purchase orders that have been cut that never actually get spent, et cetera. So at this point, things being, all things being said, as of this particular snapshot, we're also starting to position ourselves well as far as um, our year-end close is concerned and how much deficit or surplus we may end up with. Included in the um, total expenditures or transfers out for unrestricted is $1.7 million worth of contributions made to our restricted programs. Those restricted programs are routine restricted maintenance uh, for the building, our new teacher project program. Special education. And alt ed special education. Um, our tier two admin credentialing program. And also um, our sports league and some additional money set aside for CTEP. As we had um, kind of a little bit of a weak enrollment this year around the medical assisting program. And generally those programs are fairly self-sustaining, but this year the enrollment came in extremely low. Um, and so we are going to be um, helping backfill the costs for that particular program this year. On the restricted side of the budget, um, if, again, this is, I think, uh, probably very near where you are, around in the seventies somewhere of your board agenda. Again, restricted is kind of boring in that it's money in and money out. It all has strings attached to it. It's for very specific programs. It's always important though to report out on these particular programs because generally speaking, especially in the environment we're in now, you have monies that can come in and be spent over the period of two to three years, especially when we think about all the one-time federal funding that came into um, everyone. And so we may have recognized or even actually received those dollars, but it's taking us two to three years to actually spend them down. So when you see deficits on the restricted side of the budget, you really don't need to worry a whole lot about that unless they start exceeding what your balance is, in which case then you do have a problem. So seeing deficits on this side just means we're doing our job and spending our money in the way we're told to spend out these grants and one-time dollars. All right, now we're going to move into the NYPD. So the multi-year projections of the NYPD are based on a series or set of assumptions. So the first big assumption is our people, the major part of our budget is our people. Um, we had all units settled for the 2324 fiscal year. And so now the cost of all those agreements are included in our first interim budget. Our uh, step and column for movement on the salary schedules is also included, uh, included at a rate of 1.3% and 1.2% respectively. STIRS has been holding steady at 19.1% for the current and two subsequent years. And our PERS rates are 26.68, 27.7 and 28.3 for the current and two subsequent years. Our health and welfare estimate increased by 2%, up to 7% each year now. That's because of the negotiations that we had last year that we settled on. The split changed between how much we would pay as a COE versus how much employees were going to pay. And so now our assumption has had to increase slightly to accommodate for that change. Adjusted and then removed are one-time revenues and expenditures in the subsequent years. Again, this would be the ESRS, all of the ESRS, as well as the CalHope grant or any mental health grants or any other one-time grants that we may have received. And I, I say that lightly. That's been a really, really difficult task for Melissa and her team, because there were so many new things that came in and some things were good for one year and some things were good for three years and something new came in. And then I just, I say it, but it's with heavy workload that comes along with that and keeping track of it. And luckily, Excel has lots of columns, so you can keep track of everything individually. But that's, she's done an amazing job helping us keep that straight. So I do want to thank you for all your hard work with that. The last thing on the page here is something we're going to spend a little bit more time talking about, and that's COLA, cost of living increase. The assumption that we chose to use for this time around was 0% for 24, 25, and 25, 26. We chose to use a 0%. And if we can go to the next slide, I'll talk to you a little bit about why. I kind of, this slide made me kind of happy. Oh, he is moving. Awesome. Because who else can laugh at COLA, right? Until you see somebody cute like that. What we're trying to show here is just how much COLA can change from period to period. And sometimes you can see that it changes for the better and sometimes you can see that it changes for the worse. So for example, if you look at the column that says 2324, when the 2223 budget was released, they'll go out and tell us, you know, several years in the future, what they think your COLA can be and you use those for your multi-year, right, assumptions. So they told us back in 2223 at the governor's proposed budget that COLA was going to be 3.61% last year or for this year, I apologize, for this year. And when the enacted budget actually happened for us in this fiscal year, it went all the way from 3.61% up to 8.22%, which is pretty record high up there. But that which goes up can come down as well. Again, we're back on the swing. And so the projection for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 years came in at about, again, we're looking at the January proposal of 3.54%. Right now, it enacted, it's at 3.94%. But everyone has probably heard about the state economy. Everybody has heard or read about the LAO's estimate and the fact that we are looking for, at the fact that the 2223 actual state revenue receipts were $26 billion, billion with a B, behind estimates. And then also for 2324 and the 24 budget years, the state is predicting a shortfall of 42 billion. So your, your quick math on that is a $68 billion shortfall over the three-year period. Those are pretty big numbers. So the last notice that came out from LAO was that we think COLA maybe is going to be about 1.27%. I'm a gambling girl. I don't want to bet on that one necessarily. That's the reason why we chose to go with a 0% COLA on our money, which can be hopefully, worst-case scenario. Why does Leanne say hopefully? Hopefully, how can you be worse than zero? Because back in '07, '08 through about '09, '10, so some of us old salts who've been around for a while might remember that. And hopefully, everybody was born by then at this group. We've got so many lovely young people. You were born, right? You were already born? Okay, great. Whew. All right. We received what I refer to as the seven-up years. It was the un-COLA, no COLA. In fact, it was negative. And they were deficiting people their money. They'd say, yeah, we owe you a dollar. We're only going to send you 70 cents, though. So those were really ugly, ugly years. And so history sometimes has a tendency to repeat itself. I'm hoping I don't have to put a seven-up bottle up there in the future that says we are in the un-COLA years. But I'm also not really 100% certain, looking right now at a $68 billion shortfall, that we're actually going to get that 1%. So I just wanted to birdwalk a little bit on that and explain what the logic was. Again, for new board members in particular, who may not have the history of how state funding has worked in the past. Okay. So the, the shoe is dropping, as we sometimes like to say, in our county and across the state. So we've got COLA that's dropping down from an 8% this year, all the way down to maybe a 1% for next year. We've got one-time money that's expiring for a lot of our districts. And we also have declining enrollment happening at the same time, which affects our ADA. The Department of Foreign, Finance, the Department, it's late, what time? Oh, yeah. The Department of Finance projections have Santa Cruz County, our enrollment dropping. I think that just came out this week, if I'm not mistaken, Rebecca. Right. So it has our enrollment in Santa Cruz County dropping 21.4% for the 10-year period from 2223 through 3233. Maybe that's 11 years. So that's an average drop of about 2% to 3% per year for their projections. And I know Superintendent Sabah has been doing and sharing crunching of numbers for us about some data of when kids leave, where do they go? And a lot of them are leaving the county, as we've seen in some of the data that we've been collecting of late. So our first two columns on this particular chart show what we were funded on, what your ADA is now versus what you're funded on can be two different numbers, especially now that we have the three prior year rolling average protection. For example, in one of our programs, our actual ADA is about 33, but we're being funded on 60 because of the protections that are in place. But when that rolls off, we're going to be funded on the 30 unless we end up with more kids in that program. So hopefully, we will. So I just wanted to let you know that we are trying to be conservative. You can see that we are predicting a decline through the 25, 26 projected numbers. We didn't have this information about the 2% to 3% at the time, but we did build in a 1% decline. So we will be anxious to see how that, how that works out. You may recall, a year or so ago, we had declining ADA in our outed program, but it was much softer than the rest of the state. We, we did experience some, but not nearly to the magnitude that others were. So I'm also going to be anxious to see if we can maintain that awesome record. We have great programs here. Kids are starting to come back, so. That's, that's the story on ADA. So how that influences our unrestricted multi-year projections? We can see that initially, when you look up there in our total revenues and transfers in, which again, since this is the unrestricted side of the budget, that's being driven primarily by our LCFF revenue. So you can see that using COLA isn't the same thing as saying we're going to flat-fund ourselves, right? Flat funding means it's 32 million, 32 million, 32 million. By using the 0% COLA, it shows that our revenue is declining slightly and that's because of the enrollment and the effect of our rolling ADA dropping. So using 0 actually yields us less. I am concerned with some of the districts that you represent and the school districts that you are over in those areas, simply because some of them may be experiencing what we also know as the zero COLA or less than that. And that's even with the 8% COLA, a lot of our districts only recognize or yield at about 4% to 5% new money only because of their declines in ADA. So I just want to let you know that the picture we have here at the COE is really different and I believe us to be in a much stronger position than perhaps some of our local districts. And some of those local districts might be in your areas. So I just want to make sure that we don't try to compare our COE budgets with each of our individual districts, because they all have a different story and a little bit different calculation that happens for them. So our total revenues again and transfers in, you can see that there's a slight decline for those. But our total expenses and transfers out are declining slightly as well. Our deficit or surplus as projected is, again, the current year, we're down to 877,000, leaving us with a $27.7 million balance. And then in the out years, that balance is going down to about, from 20, down to 26 million and down to about 25.5 million as of today. Again, knowing that we will probably come in stronger at the end of this fiscal year. I also want to point out to you that the required 5% reserve is not held in this particular account. It's held in Fund 17. So in addition to this, we also have our 5% reserve. And if you're interested in that number, when you look at your Saks packet, that's going to be Form 17, which holds that balance. On our restricted multi-year projections, nothing super exciting here other than we, as we've already discussed, dollars are expiring. Expenses associated with those dollars are then going away and/or being absorbed potentially into the unrestricted budget if those programs are something that we feel we want to continue to maintain, because it's adding to our, our students' success and progress. And we are looking at ending out that particular fund with approximately a $3 million balance at the end of the third year. So combined, again, I'm really happy to report, we've got some really strong numbers here. We've got our ending fund balance looking respectable, not changing by too much. We do know that there are a little couple of more changes coming to us in the form of LCFF that will hopefully benefit the COE, but we don't have all the details on that. So when we get more details and information on that, we'll be sharing that with you and you can expect that our revenue numbers will probably slightly increase as well as a result of these other changes that we're still waiting to find out on as far as additional programs that come with a list of what you're supposed to do with those dollars. So as soon as we know exactly what we were getting and then the list of requirements, sounds like restricted money, doesn't it? Then we will be bringing that adjustment to you as well. Are there any questions? I know these were not the super fun pages, except for the little guy from Cartoon Network. But any questions yet before we continue on to the criterion standards?
I do have a question. ESRS funds, have they all been used up?
Not completely, no. I think we have one more year left. That's our three, right?
Okay, but, so, but we have plans for them, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that I figured.
Yeah. We have plans and we arm wrestle. I'm kidding. I promised I wouldn't share that part, but no. We definitely have plans. Everybody wants to spend that dollar. So we, it's more like trying to decide how we, who's going to win on that one, where we think the dollar should be spent. There's never a lack of ideas of how to spend those dollars, though. Straw's? That's a good one. We'll have to remember that. He said to draw straws. Yeah, okay. Not opposed. Might be easier. All right, next slide. So I'm going to the really important section of your documents, which is your criterion standards. The first not met that we have was around our ADA. Again, it was because the alternative education funding methodology changed again from annual to the three-year prior year average, new for us in 2324. And that's why we were outside of the standard. Number two, our projected LCFF revenue had changed by more than 2%. Again, that's as a direct result of that methodology change that we already talked about. On the next slide, we are looking at projected operating revenues for the current and two subsequent fiscal years have not changed by more than 5%. And again, it's because our federal unearned revenue from 2223 was then recognized in the 2324 fiscal year. And also influencing that was the Gatsby 31 fair market value adjustments that were made to our local revenue. Our operating expenditures, books and supplies for the current and two subsequent fiscal years have not changed by more than 5% since budget adoption. And again, because our restricted revenue goes up, then in turn also our expenses go up as well. So yes, that did change. All right, our unrestricted deficit spending did not exceed the standard and our deficit spending did decrease to the point where it was outside again of the, the norm as, or the, sorry, the standard that they have established for this particular criteria. And then also, we had deficit spending in our current year that was recognized in first interim, which includes things such as one-time technology improvement projects. We launched the robotics initiative. And also, we had those contributions we talked about earlier that help support other educational programs. Temporary enter fund borrowing, we do anticipate the need for some temporary borrowing from Fund 1 to the Fund 9, which is our charter fund, our cafeteria fund. This is also as a result of timing of state revenues that come in late, like definitely on our Fund 13, which is our cafeteria fund. They're usually two to three months in arrears. Meanwhile, you're trying to pay all your expenses. Those are usually temporary loans. And as soon as they get their money back in, then the money comes back to us in Fund 01. And then also, we had our board resolution, number 2325, that also helps support these temporary borrowings for cash flow purposes. The last question we have here on criteria, I think that's maybe the last one. No, it's not. I'm sorry. I'm just kidding, trying to keep you engaged. All right. Have the contributions from our unrestricted to restricted resources changed by more than 20,000 or that 5% tolerance? And again, we have been moving funds that were set aside in Fund 01 for our debt service over to Fund 56. And so now we're seeing the impact of that transferring over to our restricted RDA monies that we used to get in that were for the purposes of paying the cops. Those are now going directly into the debt service fund, as well as our previous assigned amounts and that committed amount that we just talked about. I think actually this is kind of an exciting side. If you're an accounting and debt nerd like me, and I think that maybe a little bit Abel's like that, even though he doesn't want to admit it. But by making these changes and by you having approved some of the most recent resolutions that we've brought forward to you, we estimate now that the debt will potentially be able to be paid off in 2027 instead of 2037, which was the original schedule. And by doing this now, you've helped us save the COE over $1 million in interest. So I'm very pleased that you've supported these initiatives that we've been bringing to you. That should, we should have had one that went boom on that one, huh? So super excited, super excited about that. It makes me really happy when we can save money. Okay, do we have a long-term commitment? Yes, we have our certificate of participation and we're using our RDA and other funds to pay that off. And do we operate any self-insurance programs? Yes, we always have, we always will, and this is for the workers' compensation that we are a part of, insurance. So what's next? So the governor's going to release a proposed 2324 budget by January 10th, 2024. I think there'll be a lot of people in the audience eating popcorn and listening intently to the show that's going to be coming to us in January. Maybe some of us chewing on Pepto-Bismol, not sure where you fall in that category, but it's going to be exciting no matter what. So several of us will be up in Sacramento on January 17th for that release. Also, I want to make sure you're all aware, especially my budget advisory folks, that the Capital Budgers Budget Perspectives Workshop will be here on January 31st from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So if you can, I encourage you to attend. And when we're done with that budget proposal in January, we will be using that to prepare assumptions for, believe it or not, 24, 25 COE budgets. When we were doing the multi-year, I was telling Melissa, oh my God, I can't believe that I'm actually saying these years out loud right now. It feels very strange. In addition to using those to formulate initial assumptions, we also are starting the process already for second interim, which, believe it or not, is due January 31st. So right around the corner. And we will be bringing that information to you in March. So thank you for your time and your attention. I know budgets aren't the funnest thing in the whole wide world, but that's all we have for you tonight.
Are there any questions that anyone would like to ask concerning this absolutely monumental task? All do so well. I sit and listen. I'm in awe and that you know what you're talking about. And that you know what you're talking about. I skip from what I know to what I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is new business 13.1.
I just, I would like to just thank our amazing business services team. These have been some of the most challenging years in education in so many different ways, and that does include the complexities of state, federal and local budgetary issues. And we've also experienced a lot of impact on retirements and changing in staffing. And I have to say, our team has been, has rappled and overcome these challenges and is thriving and is doing an outstanding job, not only to care for our own budgets, but also to support school districts. And so I just heartfelt thank you to to Leanne and to Becky and Melissa and everybody who's a part of our business services team. You're doing outstanding work. And putting in long, long hours and doing, I think, taking our, our business services, I would say, delivery, deliverables to the next level in terms of quality and expertise and also doing it with a lot of heart, knowing exactly what each dollar is going to be spent on and how it's going to benefit our students. So thank you very much.
It's thriving versus surviving. That's important. Okay, moving on to looking at and approving resolution 23-39 on school board recognition. And you want to take this? Or do you want? Okay.
I, I hear you, Sue. And on the agenda, it says that Ferris Sabah would be presenting this, does it not?
It does. Thank you so much for that, Trustee Nichols. I appreciate that. You know, I think that, that this is, it's actually more, most appropriate for this to come from me because it really is a recognition of your roles as school board members as county board of education members and of all the school board members across our county. And the, the leadership, the courage, the focus to be able to make sure that the work and of, of education continues through, through some, some of those very, as I mentioned earlier, those very difficult times. And so this is a resolution acknowledging the hard work of our school board members. Again, that includes you and all of the school board members in all of our 10 school districts. And really is a statement of, of appreciation for, and I'll just read off a few things here. Advocating to best serve the children in our community each and every day. School members working closely with parents, educational professionals and other community members. Being responsible for building and maintaining the structure to provide a solid foundation for our school system. In many ways, you are a foundational part of, of the educational system. And it is not only in setting policy, but in, in facing some very, very big challenges. And we're going to need you to continue that, that resolve and that courage and the day, in the, in the times to come. Because I anticipate that, you know, the challenges that we're facing are going to continue. So this is a resolution in appreciation of school board members and for school board recognition month.
Thank you. So I think first time I've ever been recognized. You know, as a, as a school board. And so really, thank you. Bruce?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution. Or I'm sorry, I move to approve the resolution 23-39, school board.
President Roth, Sandra Nichols is raising her hand in the Zoom.
Okay.
Yes, Sandra.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra.
I'll put my hand down now, if I can.
Didn't even see it. Okay.
It's just went up there. It's gone now.
Okay, so any input, any questions? Or shall we go ahead with the roll call?
Trustee Nichols second, the motion.
Well, that's right, yeah.
Student.
I will get this.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Aye.
Trustee Alto?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada? Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Yes. So pat yourself on the back. And again, thank you, Ferris, for doing, bringing this to us. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. I, I'll, some of the items we already covered and I'll be, such as the congratulations to to Becky that, that we already covered and I think this well-deserved award. I did want to share with you that I got to join Senator John, State Senator John Laird and other dignitaries yesterday at the SoCal High School football field to honor the high school team, the Knights who won the state championship. The first team in the history of Santa Cruz County to win the state championship. And it was really a wonderful event that was well-attended and very celebratory. I did want to also share with you that one of the projects that we've been working on is through, is called the K16 Collaborative, which is a partnership with UC's community colleges, several districts in all counties between Santa Cruz and Ventura. It's a very large region. And we did receive a grant collectively for $18 million to promote four pathways that we're going to be working on here and across this region. In healthcare, in education for STEM positions. You know, teaching STEM positions, engineering and computer science. And so we're excited about the opportunities that this could afford our, our community. And we're going to be hiring a coordinator that will be working as part of support of this, of this, of this grant and this work. Excited. I did want to give you some state updates. We are receiving notifications about which school districts are qualifying for differentiated assistance. This is the, the, the school districts that based on their dashboard data will be receiving additional support from us here at the County Office of Education. And also for the first time, charters are being added. And so you'll be learning about differentiated assistance. We do give a report at the end of the year from the Ed Services Department about those services so we can let you know about that. But the reason this is occurring right now is that the dashboard, the California Dashboard for Schools is back up and will be released tomorrow. So tomorrow, the public will have access to the dashboards. So the different colored gauges that were available before the pandemic are, are going to be up in areas like looking at, you know, language arts and math and English learner progress and a variety of other areas. And so we encourage you to go to that website tomorrow, CaliforniaSchoolDashboard.org. And we'll be providing you additional information about the work that we're going to be doing with the school districts in support of their continued improvements for, for their students. I, I believe that Leanne already talked about the funding news and, and this kind of triple threat, if you would. One is this, the Legislative Analyst Office just came out with, with, with some new conclusions that next year, we're anticipating a $19 billion deficit in education statewide. As you know, the tax revenues that they collect, the percentage of that goes to education and the tax revenue being collected has been, is less than expected and, and could, could result in serious reductions for our schools next year. In addition, as you also heard, that there's expiration of many pandemic-related federal funding such as Esser and other, other funding sources. And in addition, as you also heard, low enrollment, we are seeing continuous drops. I'm hearing that Santa Cruz County, that number that you heard, which is a 23% anticipated drop, is the highest in the state. Highest county in the state. And so we're, you also may have heard that P V U S D had a drop of 25% over five years. And so they're, they're dropping at a much higher level than others. And that is gonna, if, for the students who are enrolled, their attendance is also lower than it has been in the past, where we had 95, 96% attendance rates for students were getting 80%. And so if you have less students, and of the students who are enrolled, they're not coming to school. School districts get funding based on students in their seats. And if they're not in their seats, regardless of whatever reason, we're not going to get funded. So all of these things are going to represent a compounding effect for our county and, and others as well. But our school districts and, and are going to be impacted significantly by this. As well. And so we anticipate that, you know, that there are going to be some major challenges, especially for those districts who have very few reserves or who have been anticipating, who have not been, you know, who have these long-term commitments with ongoing costs of staffing. And because when almost 90% of our budget is, you know, where salaries and benefits, there's really only one place for us to go when, when there are so part of our job is to support the school districts and ensure they're solvent. And we are going to be sure to make, you know, to help them as they're making their plans with our AB 1200 responsibilities, thinking three years or beyond, that, to be sure that they're thinking about resolvency and the fiduciary responsibilities is. I did want to share with you that on a more positive message that the, the state is investing significantly on new funding for behavioral health services. And over $4.6 billion is being invested over the next few years to help school districts provide behavioral health services. In addition, today, we were given more information about the ability to bill commercial insurance. So if a student qualifies for Medi-Cal, they've been able to bill Medi-Cal and get reimbursed for about 60% of the cost of that service. But now, starting in January, only Pahravalli and five school district, but other districts will get to start in will be able to, any student who walks in, who gets behavioral health services, will be able to bill Medi-Cal if they qualify for Medi-Cal. Or if they have health insurance, will be able to bill commercial insurance providers will be required to reimburse us. This is quite possibly the first time we have a sustainable model for behavioral health services. And, and, you know, we're doing a lot of work and we would love to give you an update at some point. We're anticipating the school to high schools this year, prior to next year. And, and so we're really excited about the increases. Very closely with county behavioral health, with the I did want to share with you a little bit about safety. We had a situation last Tuesday here in the building where a couple of folks came to the building to conduct what they call a First Amendment audit. And you could find these folks online. They like to post their, their videos. They claim that their purpose is to, to verify that the government agencies are doing their job and giving taxes. Our experience with them, and if you see in the videos, is that really their, their goal is to try to intimidate and embarrass and incite a reaction from staff to get it on videos. And it's about their harassment of, of our folks and to And so we had, we've been working with our safety committee and had anticipated the possibility of it occurring. Notice that when you come into the, into the building, there's signs that says, you know, employees they chose to violate those postings. We notified them that they're in violation of our policy. And that this is a school site. You know, we do have students, we have students who are They refused to, to either return to the lobby and disruptive and disrespectful and violation of the criminal code 67. Finally, we call law enforcement and we were We do anticipate possible additional activity from people that know them and they encourage people to do this kind of, to do this kind of activity. But I feel really confident that we had systems in place. We handled the situation in real Nicky Barra was our PIO, kind of was the face of a lot of that, those interactions. So he's probably going to be featured quite prominently in the videos. But he did an outstanding job in trying to redirect and try to deescalate the situation. And we're grateful to law enforcement for
Is, is that why he's in the cast?
With kicking them out, yeah.
You should have seen the other guy. Yes, completely unrelated, yeah. But, but we did want to just give you that information also that we are, we've, we've learned from it. And also you'll see some new signs that say, for example, I know trespassing or loitering on school grounds that are now posted outside to emphasize that we are a school site. And we will continue to strengthen our, our to ensure that we keep our students or staff safe. Part of that work also is, this year, we're going to be updating our threat assessment protocol. That's, threat assessment is, is what we use when a student makes a threat of violence against the school. And so there's a protocol that we developed and in updating, we're going to be doing a big, major update in February on training all safety teams from all over the county. We'll also be looking at a text-based notification system for all staff. We'll, we'll ask you to opt into that so that if there is a situation, you're you'd get notification, there's something that's occurring. You'd also have a number that you would be able to text if you wanted to. And so you'll be, you'll be caring about that. I did want to share with you also, kind of safety related, that there was a breach by or by our our insurance provider. And you should have received an email today that's from Troy Cope. And it'll be, there were the, we've asked our insurance provider to please provide, they're responsible to notify folks, but we wanted to give you a heads up in case your information was not sure if, if you, you, you're, you're going to get notified if you're included in that breach. Unfortunately, this is something that's occurring in so many different areas where our personal information happening is getting and it's happening in a variety of, I'm sure, I, unfortunately, my bank account, you know, Wells Fargo customer notified that Wells Fargo a few years ago. And so this is something that, and so that we are going to be putting some recommendations for staff as and include you, steps that we can take, kind of generally, to be able to ensure that we are minimizing the risks when it comes to identity. So more information to follow about the specific And finally, just wanted to share with you that Leanne is leading, working with our maintenance and operations team to oversee some upgrades to this facility, including the roof. We're going to be, we need to redo the front parking area and entry to the building. Armaments.
Where you trip over the
For example. And lighting and other kinds of changes and also some changes to the lobby. And so those will probably be taking place in the summer. That. And also for safety, insulation of speakers. So if you're not anywhere near a phone, you would in fact get that you'd be able to hear that. Or if you're in the bathroom, you'd be able to hear that. We're also working on a couple of projects for our school sites. So Cal High School, we're looking at some mobile, some, some new units for, for instruction for our special education program. And also looking at some alternatives to the Highlands. We've really outgrown the space that we're currently, currently in. Services to students as a result. Um, Leanne, do you want to add anything to any of those updates?
I might just think the other important thing is a lot of this school upgrades that we're looking at, we are working on receiving federal funding, or sorry, state level funding for those projects. So we will be getting in line, we're already, already working with people to put, submit applications when the time is appropriate so that we will be reimbursed at some point in the near future from the state when it comes to some of these facility projects.
And that is it for my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I would suggest going online and seeing about the First Amendment. Audit. It's very interesting to see what they're doing. And it really, it's, it's very unfortunate because it tends to fall on staff. Broke his leg or whatever. But anyway, it, and I don't know how you prepare for it, except have a plan and follow through like we did. But it's awkward and it really is a form of harassment.
And, and, and to be very clear, nobody was, there was no, there were no injuries whatsoever.
You're okay.
And, and our, our staff did an outstanding job in, in how they responded to, to a very, very tough situation. And I think we, our staff did an excellent job.
As far as trustee reports, Edward, do you have anything to report from the past month?
Not to report this month.
Okay.
Me as well.
Me too. I have nothing to report either.
I don't want to talk. So we had, first of all, P V P S A Super Kitchen was there. Was really excited to see really good representation from the C O E about, I want to say maybe a dozen, more, maybe a little bit less, but good representation overall. It's always good to support, you know, there's so many nonprofits that have similar goals that, that, that we do. So it's always good to partner and hear their name come up, you know, and then being able to work together towards a mission, right? To, to, to help all of our students. So I did that, really enjoyed it. And went to the C S B A Annual Educational Conference. And I think the big news coming out of that is that C C B E or the County, California County Board of Education, the, like, the, the subgroup for C S B A was disbanded. So it's not, no longer present. It's no longer serving. And so C S B A, and I'm going to need some help here. But I believe there are over a thousand different school districts in the state of California. And C O Es, I believe there's about fifty eight counties. So we're outnumbered in terms of C O Es of the school districts, right? I mean, in this, in this county alone, we have ten school districts and just, just one county board. So C S B A for the longest time has, has, has really focused on the local school districts and their needs. C O E is the C O E, some C O Es have felt like they've not received as much as attention as, or lobbying as they should. So that's what C C B E, that's what their goal was, right? To really focus on C O E specific issues to legislate based on C O E and, and, and our needs. And for whatever reason, there's always been, you know, contention, there's always been maybe a lack of communication between C S B A and C C B E, even though C C B E is part of C S B A. They have, communication hasn't always been the best. And after reviewing it for about a year, I believe, they decided to just disband C C B E and then just focus on a C S B A in, in general. So what does that mean? That, that means that C S B A still says that they're going to advocate for us, right? And, and for our needs, for, for the C O Es. And there's been a lot of good changes that have happened. We have the Masters in Governance, right? That, for the longest time, when I started, it was just available, it was just like, just one standard course. And now they have, and offer a C O, a C O E specific course. So, so, so that's, that's definitely been an improvement. And then, so C S B A, the way that they're structured, they have what they call a delegate assembly. And they split up the state into different regions, twenty four different regions. And there's representatives from all those regions, and that includes one C O E is the way that it's structured right now. So with the, this banning of the C C B E, what they're doing is they're adding an additional region or region number twenty five and making that one C O E specific. And they're the ones going to advocate specifically for the C O E's needs. So they're not going to have a, a whole independent board like, like they did previously, but they will have a delegate assembly or still have that presence there. And they're still working out the changes, what, what that's going to look like. Delegate Assembly, whether there's going to be a C O E person involved, that's still to be determined. But C S B A is in the process of defining that, seeing how, what that looks like. And I believe we were told that if we have any interest, if anybody is interested in joining those conversations, then, then, that, that was an option, you know, if anybody wants to voice their opinions, that they're more than happy to, to do so, right? And I still think we need to advocate for C O A in our specific needs. So for the time being, so a lot of changes. For the time being, the, what was in, what was planned for the near future is still in place. So the Governance Workshop, that's C O E specific in March eighth and ninth in Sacramento is still going on, as is the annual conference that happens in September, twelfth to fourteenth here in Monterey. So that's still going to move, we're going to move forward with that while the committee determines, you know, what's going to happen with, you know, those C O E specific programs. So that was a big deal. That was the big news that came out of the conference. And so one of the things, I want to talk about one specific. I don't know what you're going to talk about soon. So I'll just talk about Chat G P T, because why not? Twenty twenty three. It's been a year. Can you guys believe it? It's been a year since Chat G P T came out. And we were very fortunate because Santa Cruz City Schools actually had a panel and they were there and they talked about that subject. And very knowledgeable, really enjoyed that, that experience, being able to get that, that perspective, you know? And then you could just sense, you can just tell that there's a lot of people who are kind of reluctant in terms of, you know, when it comes to technology and accepting new, new technology, because there's a lot of risk, there's a lot of concerns with plagiarism. There's a lot of concerns with easy, ease of access, you know, to, to information. But I really enjoyed that perspective because the Santa Cruz City Schools, they looked at it, you know, they, they took the time, they made the effort. And ultimately, what they said is, you know, a, a student's voice or an individual's voice is what really stands out, you know? It's, it's, when you use A I or different computer programs, you can, you lose that, right? Because it's just the, it's just the, like a bank, it's just a blob of different information that just, it spits out, right? So there is no personality. It really doesn't have the, the, the person's voice. So there was an English teacher there that mentioned that, yeah, me, I know my students and can tell, right? Because of what a student's voice is and, and if a, an essay is, is based off of, you know, A I versus that comes from, you know, your, your own internal voice. So that was interesting. And I told them, you know, that there, there needs to be a part two next year, just to see how technology advances, just because it is, has been advancing rapidly. But yep, really enjoyed it, learned a lot and was grateful, appreciative that I was able to go and definitely encourage everybody to consider it for the next time as well. That's my report.
I did attend also.
President Roth.
I felt. I'll never get used to microphone. I will say that it is the best C S B A Annual Convention that I have attended. And I'm hoping to have a discussion with Abel about perhaps being on the committee of, of C S B A, C C B E. Getting our voice, our voice in there. And it actually, what I did never, never knew was that C C B E was actually created under C S B A. But they kind of went two different ways. And I guess the point at which they, C S B A didn't like what was happening was when we did our own bylaws last year. So it put us into a conflict. The different, different events were very, very interesting and you had a choice of many. And the they had three speakers. The first one was Dr. Sean Genwright about transformative leadership. And a couple of things that he said that I really liked, he said, we need to, instead of looking at things as a problem, take, turn it and look at what might be a possibility, be more positive. And instead of always being in a rush, we need to turn it into something that is flowing much more easily. He says that we are, his premise was that we are addicted to frenzy and to always being busy. And that COVID was a kind of an interesting slowdown for everyone. But that somehow we as Americans are thinking that it is important to be busy all the time. Something makes us feel more, more, I don't know, stronger. But it talks about mental health and mindfulness. It was good. And I went to Luann Burman Riviera, who conducts our board kind of once a month, or once a year, we meet at this governance body and talk. And anyway, it was about student. And so there's lots of things that I'd like to bring up at different times. But anyway, I'm pleased that we were able to raise our hand that we had a student member. And one of the things is to completely urge your participation in our discussions. Because you are the closest to our education system. We're overseers, but you're actually overseeing and participating. So anyway, there's some ideas that I will first talk to Ferris about. About, about what you do. Let's see. There, there were several things on A I, but I will say that what our Santa Cruz City Schools did was the most impressive out of everything up there. And I'll give this to you, but it is, they had a board member who said, what is this? Chat G H P or still not getting that right, but G P T. And they, that was a year ago. And they had, they have actually crushed it. They had superintendent, superintendent was there. Well, they had somebody representing the whole school district and how they are utilizing this as a positive, positive teaching, writing. And I propose, once Ferris has had a chance, he may know all about it already. But to see if we can't have a presentation or at least a presentation to our curriculum. And I'm hoping that maybe they would even come to discuss about the Santa Cruz County School Boards Association to let everyone know how this is being utilized and that it's not something to fear. But as a tool going forward to really help teaching, so teaching, writing. So anyway, Ferris, it, it was really good. And sorry, pages of notes, but another thing I sat in on was during our school board meetings, how to handle different things, which interruptions, that kind of like, anyway, we need to talk and perhaps establish some protocols just for us in public and how to handle it, what to say, et cetera. And I should have had all of this written down, but Sal Kong spoke and on A I. And personally, I was more impressed with Santa Cruz City Schools, truly. I mean, he, he said some of the same things, but they went into detail of how it is, it's happening, yeah, what to do. And I was surprised that, he's, he's a good speaker, but I, I followed that presentation. Wasn't as good. I attended a community and court schools and it's far more advanced than what we have here. We have so few students, right? Court system, schools. But this was a district Sacramento and quite impressive of what they do. They have far more students than, I think they, they have maybe a thousand. It's high. So they have a lot of things going on for that, that group. And did another one on public records. And one of the things that I wanted to stress was that we as a board need to be very careful in, in what we do, not about the records, but of how we use our social media or emails. Don't ever reply. It because, because a written document and it can be just very disruptive to us as private citizens. If it's coming off of our own email especially, it opens you up to perhaps areas maybe that you don't wish to be examined. And then this, don't reply all, you know, with school board members especially. This also is with something like Facebook. It's even, don't, you know, say I, right? You know, this is a great idea for education and you're on my Facebook page. Even an icon of a thumbs up can be considered a discussion. And so we really need to be careful that we are not breaking the law. That our student is. That our student is, doesn't fall under the ground act, which is, but still be careful. Then the, the last person, the last speaker was someone named Mark Perna. And I purchased his book and I'm going to give it to you, but it's going through a couple of other people, but it's actually addressed, you know, he signed it. It was quite interesting. Did you go? He talks at a hundred and twenty words per minute. Which was impressive. But his, he was talking about our young, our Z generation, eighteen to twenty six and, and into the millennials. But he has an argument that he feels the statement college and career readiness might have put us on a wrong pathway. That it's really career readiness, that college does not, is not an end for everyone. It's a good focus, but it is not as important as a career. And he said today with the younger, younger generations is professional skills now kind of boils down to that you're showing up. That's one of the most critical things that our industries, businesses are, are fighting, fighting with or trying to regulate. He calls them the Y generation and that they, each of our youth, and I think we do too, consider ourselves very unique. And what we as educators need to be doing is helping them to figure out what they want. And he said he feels that the first thing is to identify what kind of lifestyle. What is, what is your hopes? What is what you want rather than the career? And he said, once you connect with a student on how they want to live, why they want to live, then you can start the exploration, which can change from time, you know, over time to how to get to that. What, what will lead you to find out that spark? He said, it calls, he said something about a tree and he said, you're, when you hear that branch break, you know what to do. And he said, we need to kind of push this in with our students is finding out really what is important, what do they need to do? And there is it's in Riverside, I believe is the location Riverside. They have a program called Thirty One Trees and they are, he showed different examples of it, but it's a tree with all these branches, but it's under the label of engineering. And all these branches of what is part of engineering. And it sounds very, very interesting. He's believing that if you can awaken the passion in a student, they're going to go forward on their own. Not by what we tell them or, or whatever. The, it was this quote that I, I really liked. Bhutan, oh, that the mind is not a vessel, but it is a fire to be kindled. It feels that we're, we're, and he's not blaming us, but he said, there's so much that is being put on to our administrators, our staff, our teachers, that they cannot do it all. And that we just may need to readjust how we do, how we do it. So anyway, I'll give you the book and good luck. Yeah. So anyway, I, I appreciate the ability and the access to going to some, this kind of a convention. And I would urge all of us to take advantage of it. It's going to be in Anaheim. So maybe Disneyland will light your fire. But anyway, beginning of December, the first week of December. And also student, be too late for Oscar, but to perhaps our incoming student, they have a whole schedule for them. Because what we're looking at with students board members is this is, I think, an incredible experience of going forward of public life. And how things operate, policy and budgets and, and you name it. But we need our youth to be involved in all of this to go forward to a successful America, maybe even further. But anyway, no pressure, Oscar. Okay, so that's me and I'm sorry I talked so long, but I was really like quite captivated by what I was hearing. And I so much would like to reduce the pressure on our teachers and on our administrative staff from all that is being required by our government. And to try to get teachers advising, if a student comes up and says, I want to be a teacher, the teacher today is going, don't do it. And this is, this is not good. Because we need good teachers. So anyway. Bruce.
Thank you. I'm going to join the majority in not having anything to report. Although I did want to comment that, that in the last month, I've actually been using some of the variations of the artificial intelligence sources to write software and it's kind of interesting. I, I have a big set of libraries of code that I've written. And what it needs is more tests to be sure that the code can handle all different kinds of cases. And I asked ChatGPT, one of the versions of it, to write tests for a couple of the routines in my software. And it did a decent job and it allowed me to then just correct a few things. And now I've got a test for that particular function. So it's kind of amusing. There was also just a report a couple of days ago or yesterday that educators so far are not reporting any big change impact of ChatGPT on things like writing. But so far they're not seeing that showing up. I think it's still really early in that whole process, but, but the fact that teachers are also doing it where they're saying, let's use this in order to teach writing, you know, so generate something out of the cloud, but then work on it. You know, and that's actually, that writing is rewriting, so that's really what the job is. Anyway, so that's my report, let's remember some.
I should have called on you first. Oh, and Sandra out there in the internet.
Something I'd like to report on that I'm very proud of for PVSD is PV High has three questions, so PVSD has a total of six QuestBridge finalists that matched this year. PVSD had for the first time an all time high of three. Watsonville High had two and Aptos had one. Which is extremely exciting and I'm very proud for my fellow students this year. Also, this, we were heading the deadline of UC and CSU applications. And I, we have a College and Career Center there at PV and I saw a lot of students going in for help. And it was great, although I did also see that there were a lot of students coming in for how much staff we had. So that was something too. Something else I went to see was Alice by Heart, the musical at Watsonville High, which I loved. It was great to see different students from schools that may seem disjointed or not so connected, be connected in a, as a community. It was really awesome to see and it shows our importance of our education as a connection between students. Something I'm working on too is a student feedback forum from, to release across the county for general issues that students are facing, see what is a majority issue for students. And also I'm going to be joining the Santa Cruz City Schools Monthly Students to See class on Zoom. So I'd like to thank Superintendent Chris Monroe for inviting me and allowing me to be there and that is my report.
Sandra.
Oh, I have nothing to report. It's all been reported.
Thank you, Sandra.
Good night.
Are you feeling better, I hope?
Well, I look in the mirror and I just think I won't always look like this, but right now I look like horror, a horror story. Yeah. But I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling good. Good board meeting.
Wish you well.
Thank you.
Yes, Sandra, take care. So unless I miss something here. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January eighteenth at four. And we will, we have also, I think everyone sees this where we're being invited to the graduation ceremony, so it'll be taking place in January. And I believe I'm going to make three of them, one of them, no, which is at six o'clock in Watsonville. A day I work. So I'm hoping that you all will take the opportunity to go to what is perhaps the most uplifting statement of what we do. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.